Okay, good evening, everyone. Planning Commission meeting, May 3rd, 2020. And could I have a call to order, please?
Masek?
Yes.
Burton?
Here.
Curtin?
Here.
McKenna?
Here.
Kernan? Mitchell?
Here.
Fletcher?
Here.
All right, do we do the pledge of allegiance? Can we scatter the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I was looking back, and we have not met since last fall. So this is real nice to see everybody's faces and hope you had good fall and a good Christmas. And Karen keeps telling us we're in for a lot of work. So we have the agenda before you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move, Glenn Mitchell.
Support, Derek Burton.
All right, could I have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Agenda approved. So at this time, we have public comment. And this is for items that are only on the agenda. So we ask if you come up for public comment, please state who you are and your address. And we ask that, I think we give three minutes for your public comment. Do we have anybody that'd like to step forward at this time for public comment? Okay. Seeing nobody wants to express their opinion, and that's good. Further on the agenda, we have public hearings. We have no public hearings on this month's agenda. We do have the minutes before you. And I'm sure that all the board members, you've received that in your packets. Is there any comments or discussions on the agenda of September 7th, 2021? Do I have a motion to approve or deny?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from September 7th, 2021.
I have a motion by Derek Burton.
I'll support that.
I have a motion by Ray Curtin. And there are no comments, further comments?
Well, I had a question on the third page. It had a friendly amendment motion by Masek, but then it doesn't say what that motion, friendly amendment was. It just seems incomplete, but I forgot to go back and look at. I actually had my notes to. It's the next last page of the minutes. It's very bad, very bad.
I read that.
Let's see where you at.
I thought it was friendly.
Because it restates the motion, I think, in the next page, but I didn't see what was different.
Very bad, it says.
A friendly amendment?
That Ann made a friendly amendment.
Amendment to motion.
But there was no.
No, I think, was that made? I'm not sure.
Did you say they're a friendly company?
Well, it looked like, and that's why I didn't go back and look up before that, is a motion I made. And that looks like the same motion is after that friendly amendment, so. But I did see what was the difference is there, so. I thought usually when you had a friendly amendment, it would just say what the amendment is.
Was it, and it doesn't look, it's not to adjourn?
No, it's before that.
It's before that.
Everything else was?
I think it was an expansion of fire marshal planners and engineer reports to be addressed and added to the final site plan submission.
That's why I couldn't tell from page to page. So there is a difference between the two, then.
Yeah. Move to approve the site plan application for manufacturing plant, a parcel number, and an L1 limited industrial district, and then.
I couldn't tell while going back and forth. I didn't spend as much time on it, but you just thought when you had the note there, friendly amendment, it seemed like it would actually say what that was.
I don't have my notes from last time, but.
Contingent on the concerns outlined.
Could be, I assume it's slightly different between what? Because there's a motion before this that I made, and then one after it. And it's in between, is this friendly amendment, but.
Well, there was something about the fire department degraded that driveway. So maybe.
The, I don't, we do, we talk something about it, yeah.
Yeah, contingent. Contingent on the concerns outlined by the fire marshal. And then the previous one, it just says.
Right.
Okay, so there is a difference there, but.
This is the drive approved by the fire authority, and that one is contingent. So I guess that's the.
I don't.
But it looks like I just made a motion, then she made a friendly amendment, then I made another motion. I guess that might have been the right order for.
It might have been. But everything we needed to address or make a motion on.
I think was in the second part, yeah.
Was clearly stated, so I don't think there's an issue.
Okay.
All right. So after discussion, can I have a? Do you want a roll call vote on the amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed, motion passed to approve the minutes. We don't have any communications on this agenda. There's no old business, and so we're going to move forward with new business, which is the election of officers. So I think the last time we elected the officers.
Long time ago.
I was chair, and we have Glenn as vice and Ray as secretary. Do we have any amendments to that? Isn't that kind of way, is there any amendments to this?
I think it's running great.
We do this every year, isn't this an annual? So this is annual.
Supposed to, but we skipped last year. That's why we're doing it now.
That's what we're doing.
We actually, this is, you know. I've been doing it for two, three years now straight, you know.
Without a pause. Overworked. Are you willing to accept the chairmanship, I guess, so?
Yep.
Because I, you remain chairman, I guess, would be the.
And you make a motion for the existing board as it is for this coming year?
Somebody could do that, but I don't think it's fair of the person.
Yeah, that's true. We are the elected people, you guys got to probably make that motion. We're not like ever trying to hog the glory.
I'll make a motion to leave the board structure as it is for the planning commission. I'll support that motion. I think you guys are doing a great job.
We have a motion that we will remain with the board for this coming year. First and a second, and so all in favor?
Aye.
And I, there is none opposed, so.
All right.
All right. So the second is new business for the Little Mot Farm Market site. And it is for the site plan. We do have the reviews from both the planner here, from McKenna, and from the engineer, Hubble and Roth. And I'm sure you are the applicant. And you have received the replies. Have you got copies of the reviews? So if we have any discussion, then you know exactly what. The one from Hubble and Roth was dated April 20th, and from the planner was April 27th, and then the one from the fire department. I do have a copy here, if you would like it. Sometimes I think it helps when you go through a site plan. Yes. So if we could move forward with that. All these notes. John Jackson from McKenna is here. Would you like to address us with your review?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So my name's John Jackson, I'm with McKenna. I'm sitting in for Jamie tonight, who had a meeting conflict, so I apologize for that. But he and I talked about this, and I'm up to speed. I've also had the opportunity to meet with the applicants over the years, you know, while they've been doing their temporary seasonal use there. And I'm excited to see them transitioning into a more permanent operation at that site. So we did, as you mentioned, we did our review of their request. And we've been working with them to try to get all the issues ironed out. The use that they're proposing is considered a greenhouse nursery use, which is allowed as a special land use in this zoning district. And so that's one thing that did not happen prior to this meeting, is the public hearing notification that's required for special land use consideration. So this, their project will have to be tabled until the next meeting, so we can do the appropriate public hearing notice and hold the public hearing. But we felt it would still be a good idea to go through the site plan with the planning commission and make sure that if you had questions, we'd get them answered. And there's still, you know, a few minor issues that need to be resolved with the site plan that we can work with the applicant on between now and then to make sure when it comes back, it's a clean plan. So I'll go through these real quickly, I promise I won't bore you all with this. Again, they've been great to work with, they've been very responsive to the comments we've had. Their project meets all the setback requirements of the zoning ordinance. The site is also within the Grange Hall Fish Lake Road overlay district, which has some additional design considerations, which by and large, they've met. I'll circle back to that here in a second. One of the things that is talked about in the Fish Lake Road overlay district and the master plan is this area should be pedestrian-friendly. And so that includes a provision of a pathway along the frontage of their property. So we'll have to figure out a way to secure that, either as they develop the site immediately or in conjunction with development of adjacent sites, so that it makes sense and we get the most out of that. So we'll figure that out before next meeting. Architectural design standards, you've seen the rendering. It looks, it couldn't fit any better into the character of the community. But we do need to see some more details that we typically get with a site plan application, some more details in terms of the materials that are being provided and that sort of thing. So we'd like to get some more details for the architectural drawings. But by and large, it looks like it's in character with the goals of the township. In terms of parking, again, part of the overlay district is that they have a minimal amount of parking in the front yard. And that's one of the things that they revised in the plans, is to limit the amount of parking in the front yard to 40%. And they comply with our parking, with township's parking requirements. So that's, that's great. A couple of things. Number one is, we would like to see them use the truck turning template. Not only they show how the trucks get into the site off of Grange Hall Road, but we'd like to see how it gets through the site and off the site. So maybe lay that template down in a couple more areas. And that's not just for the delivery vehicles, it's equally for the emergency vehicles and garbage collection, that sort of thing. We had a note in here that they need to provide the dimensions of the parking spaces, but lo and behold, it's right there on the sheet, we just missed it, so they've addressed that. One thing that the zoning ordinance allows, it requires parking and loading areas in commercial areas to be paved. And they're showing that the vast majority of the customer parking areas will be paved, which is great. We fully anticipate that they're going to probably, and I'd like to hear from the applicants, you know, if the planning commission is so inclined. They're probably going to use some of the rest of the site for some staging and storage and things like that, where there will be vehicles driving off the pavement. And if that is the case, and the planning commission can simply, they have the discretion to say, we don't have a problem with not paving those areas. The ordinance allows you to do that if, in the determination of the planning commission, dust won't be an issue on adjacent properties. It's beneficial in terms of stormwater, you know, minimizing stormwater issues and runoff and pervious pavement and things like that. So it's within your purview to say, you don't have to pave those areas where you're going to be staging. But it would probably be a good idea to hear from them, how they're going to maintain that in terms of putting gravel down and, you know, and what exactly, how they're going to manage that. Landscape and screening, again, you know, it's a rural character site, but we do have a couple of items that we'd like to work with them on in terms of the quantity of the landscaping, that sort of thing. Make sure they have the plantings along the road frontages, which is required when you have parking in the front. So again, we'll work with them to make sure they have the landscaping along the frontage of the property. And also, because that is an existing house, they do have to provide buffering from that. It looks like they provided the buffering on the east side of the residential property, but I'm not sure if they provided any on the south side of the residential property. It looks like that might be an area to provide some additional landscaping, unless they can demonstrate that there's existing vegetation, tree lines, or, you know, anything like that that would really make that landscaping unnecessary. So again, there's just, you can see in our recommendation, there's eight items that are sort of outstanding, actually seven because of the detail for the parking is on there. So seven issues, and we'd like to work with them to get those resolved in time for the next meeting, where we'll also consider the special land use at that time.
Very good. I might to turn this back to our board members here, if you have questions. And then we can ask the applicant to address some of those questions for us. But let's hear your questions first. I can start down, Derek. Do you have some questions, anything?
I'm just curious on the lighting piece, you know, I was looking through this. And just kind of curious, is this 25-foot lighting, is that kind of the plan at this point? Or as far as lighting on the property? Or is that something that may be affixed to the building, or is there a need for lighting? That's one of my biggest questions. And then just kind of a statement, I think with the pedestrian sidewalks, I think, you know, kind of following what we did with Shannon, personally would like to see that just in conjunction with other sites, just to keep the uniformity of the sidewalk, if and when that goes in, so.
I think as far as the lighting, though, I think that is a height requirement for, you know, for their particular use there, and I'm sure that was reviewed. And is the lighting, the lighting is all on the site plan as far as, is it all labeled out on there?
Yeah, they did provide a photometric plan and details of light fixtures. The maximum height is 25 feet, which they comply with.
Yeah, we did have a lighting.
The maximum lighting levels. It's within the maximum lighting levels.
Mike, do you have anything you need to comment? Any questions?
Actually, I focused in on the lighting also, because there's a residential parcel right next to this one. And so I was looking at the lighting study, and, you know, magically, it goes to zero right where it needs to go, so. Which I don't think happens. So there might be, we might need to have some extra shielding. I'm sure we could shield that area so that actually does go to zero across the residential property. Yeah.
And kind of as an answer to yours too, the whole point of the illumination is to illuminate parking lots and all the building for safety purposes. And so when they do that, they use the photometric grid, and it's based on how high those poles are and what light fixture they are using, and how it's cast down. When they run those numbers, they're not just putting zeros or point threes or whatever, it is, it is how it falls. So it probably goes to zero before it even gets to that boundary. So if it truly is zero, if you're going to add more shielding, it's not going to affect those zeros, they are real. It's how, because the whole point of the photometric grid is to show that you are not causing illumination off-site or whether it's residential or whatever.
Right.
So that is a, and that's, you know, that's sealed by the photometric company. So that is, it is real.
Okay.
Could I ask, please, could you identify yourself, or? Pardon?
No, let's go Lawrence, Lawrence Engineering.
Okay. Mike, did you have anything else?
Oh, that was my main concern, and then we're covering, well, the eight, still now seven steps. So once those are handled, it looks like, and we see what the building is going to look like. This is, it looks nice from the beginning renderings. I think it'll work out great.
It's very nice.
Do you have any statistics on how many people are flowing through the area? And like about how many customers an hour?
No, I don't, I've never kept track of that.
Right.
You know, I get gas.
I hope it's millions and millions, but. Right, why does pictured, you know, I was looking at the site and I pictured Christmas time, I'm like, wow, this could be really huge. I'm there every year. But I was just wondering if you knew what the congestion levels were, if you had any experience. Well, you've been running it for a couple of years, so. Have you ever had a full parking lot, or where people are?
They come and go, and they all overlap for a couple of minutes, and then goes, it's like, nobody really is there for any period of time.
Yeah, you might fill up and fill up the parking lot and say, get the parking lot pretty full, and then five minutes later, you're back down.
You're back down, okay. So they're not, okay, so they won't be packed up? Okay.
I see you also do have entrances and exits. You have one on Fish Lake and one on Grange Hall. Do we have any comments or any questions out here? Glenn?
Sidewalks, I kind of thought the same thing. I really said was, it doesn't make sense with sidewalks in when there's nothing else connected to it at this point in time. And I do like the fact of walkability, but I don't, I think it's unnecessary to require to put a sidewalk in that's not going to be used at all to begin with. Now, if other things happen along there, then something probably needs to be done. But I think it'd be unrealistic to have put sidewalks in without anything else connecting them, and may not for years and years.
There's a large development coming, I just see next month.
But I want to point out, my office is down the road to that, and the sidewalks were put in 30 years after they shouldn't have been put in. You know, so I'm not sure that there's still going to be sidewalks all the way through there for many more years. But the development is going to be putting sidewalks in, the longer age hall road is going to be required for them, so. Maybe it's coming sooner, but there's still two other parcels at least between that, right? The plaza there that's there, and I think other parcels, so. Will they be forced to be connected to that? Or, you know, with sidewalks, or how would that?
You can't force them, they already have recycling.
Yeah. But right now, they would connect to nothing, and that always looks strange.
The problem is, is they never saw that in the future, and they didn't require it, so that's why.
I'm saying you would leave space for them to take place, but not require it.
Should have been considered and should have been part of that, so everybody would have done it if it would have been connected.
Yeah. What else was, lighting, I didn't think was a problem. Thought it was good, the parking lots. I thought part of our concept in the past was not to pave anymore, we really have to, because it's an impervious, water can't penetrate. And as long as there's space that's available, which I think that they were saying there was, I don't think there's any problem not having everything paved.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's my only comments. Onto Ray.
So on this solid wall they have to put in front of the building, which is four feet high, or an alternative planning may be approved by us, what would be the alternative planning? I don't like four-foot-high hedges myself.
Yeah.
And, you know, I prefer much, I won't be able to see that building as well. So what options do we have to approve there?
And I worry when I saw it, is it would block view for people getting in and out or whatever.
So, so. The picture looks real nice with grass there, but.
So what I'm thinking is, if you've driven by Col Santes in Milford, on Milford Road, Col Santes, something like that, something a little more rural, maybe a split rail fence in front with, you know, some shrubs and things like that, more decorative than anything else.
You're okay with something, we don't have to hide the parking lot, we don't have to hide the building.
Correct.
You just want some type of.
Some kind of streetscape element that sort of breaks up the view, so you're not just looking at headlights on the front of the parking lot there, breaks it up a little bit, but doesn't necessarily provide a complete screen, you know, just something decorative.
Okay.
And in character with what they're proposing, and in character with what the master plan has envisioned for that corridor as well.
All right, I guess I'm good.
Excellent, thank you for that mention, that is, it seemed like it was too much of a barrier.
And I'm assuming the engineering firm did whatever they have to do to calculate for the retention pond for the water out the parking lot, and we seem to have lots of water in this town, so. Where does the water go from the corner?
To the Tri-Wassee, just south there.
Downhill.
Is it just a tube under Grange Hall, then through ditches, how it works through there?
Right.
Okay. I'm good with that, Tri-Wassee and haul it away, that's great.
Kelly, you have any questions?
I really don't. That was he answered. About the barrier.
I did, just a couple, so, and the building does look really nice, and you're looking at this being permanent. It'll be open year-round. And you will, of course, Christmas trees and plantings, and what else do you plan on doing inside? Do you have other seasonal foods or deli or anything like that?
Well, you know, once the building's up, it's then the produce store.
Right.
So if you're around produce, you know, I could see somewhere along the line, maybe a deli counter or something like that in there, but I mean, that's, that's.
But strictly within what is allowed under the C2 for your business? Okay. Let's see, what else did I have? I think most of the questions I had was regard to what needs to be updated on the site plan, and you do have that copy, and I'm sure you will work with them on that. Let's see, what is your timeframe on this? I guess that was a good question. I mean, here we are, and you're ready to open up for spring and summer, so.
Well, you know, I'd like to have it done tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I'm not the first millionaire that's putting up something to do that. So we'd like to do it as quickly as possible. Depends on the customers flowing through and, you know, McKenna takes the dump and nobody comes in and buys a stable from you, it's going to slow down a little bit.
I guess, how are you going to operate during the process of building this? Do you have a plan for that?
Basically, the same way we have right now.
Okay, but I mean, you think you could like, you're going to move your greenhouse off the side or something, and so try to, try to keep it clicking along while you're doing this?
Yeah.
Is that okay? That's all good?
Yeah.
We do have comments also here from Hubble Roth. You have that there. Are there any questions with regard to that? I did look through this. There was one, there was one section in there where we talked about pedestrian or the crosswalk in there and extending the parking lot, is that still a consideration? Moving the parking lot all the way to the end of the property line, is that with reference for the cross-section of the crosswalk? I didn't know if that's something that garden displays, is for that, some categories. That's in the, to provide the cross-section between the neighboring properties?
To provide the.
I think that is a standard, that was in the overlay district.
Oh, a shared access, like a shared access drive to the property to the east, yeah, to the east?
So I do believe.
Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, okay.
And I do believe planning commission can make a decision on that, but I didn't know. I think that should be noted in their plans going forward, exactly what they intend to do with your cross-section under the overlay standards. Okay.
Can I ask a question on that? So the Hubble Rock and Clark, the latest letter says what they would like to see the applicant coordinate the extension of their parking lot to the property line if and/or when a future redevelopment of the neighboring parcel is associated with the establishment of a cross-access connection. So, so should I put that on plans?
Yeah, show a note on how it would be if it were to happen, you know.
In the future, if, okay.
Yeah.
I don't have any further questions. I think the building looks very nice, and, you know, I'm. I think the building looks very nice and, you know, and nice to see you come forward and we could work with you and have you bring this back to us. And, and I'm, I'm sure you're in a timeframe, so, you know, I encourage you very strongly to get all this done so it comes back. So, it doesn't have to go back and forth and we can get moving forward with this.
We have, we did get your letter and we've changed a lot of authority direct to us. We've made all of those changes. There's now blue screws on that south property line to that residential area. There's going to be a split rail fence in front of those parking spots at face Grange Hall. Are you also asking for that split rail fence on the west side of the parking that is by the dumpster?
So, one of the comments was to provide the site landscaping calculations?
We did that.
So, is there any additional landscaping that's between that parking, parking lot and Fish Lake Road?
There is not any additional though. The site calculations due to the amount of trees he's keeping.
Right, yeah.
Not clearing.
Yeah.
Along with the arborvitae area and the fence that's up there blocking the septic area, that area we counted and then the garden area. And I actually forgot to count the, the area that's to the north of the septic field and is also not going to be cleared. So, with that, it's going to bring a weight over the requirements. So, there's no more shortage of split rail fence.
Okay, yeah, you know, that, so she's asking about the, the parking that's north of the building. That's, you know, sort of the end spot, maybe visible from, from Fish Lake Road. But I'm inclined, based on the, you know, how far it's set back from the road and the landscaping that is, you know, she's got, there's a nice mix of trees that are in that area. I don't think that that parking would be very visible from Fish Lake Road. So, I, I'm not sure that that requires the, the fence, the same fence that we would require along Grange Hall. Do, does that sound reasonable?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
And as far as what you were asking about, there's not, there's no staging. They're not going to drive anywhere beyond the parking lot. They're going to park there. The septic will need to be, the septic tank that can be pumped, tanks are just on the other side of the dumpster. So, the septic truck will sit there with no, going around onto the parking area.
Okay.
And I can put that note on there.
Okay.
I feel like we did everything except we didn't have the sidewalk. And we didn't have the sidewalk, but close the sidewalk.
So, so we will look to figure out what the, the best way to handle that is. At least a note on the plan that says, you know, the sidewalk will be added, you know, at the request of the township or something like that. So, you're on the hook or someone's on the hook for when that go in.
Do we have anything else, any board members?
So, one quick question though. An Oakland County on the road and stuff, are they all good with the way the lanes are there?
Their, their request was that the entrance off of Grange Hall be a right turn and right turn out.
Okay.
So, that's done with signage.
So, far as the deceleration lane, kind of the widening, they're good with all that? You don't have to make the road wider and stuff? Okay.
We'll make sure because he was going to pull a permit for those entrances.
Right, yeah, I just, I, I just curious if that's something else we'd hop through, but no, you're on it, it's great.
Oh, yeah, we did add the truck, the truck turning stuff, but now it's on there three times.
Okay.
So, coming in, so that's on there.
Great.
Okay, well, I do think we are in agreement that this site plan at this time should be tabled and bring us back. So, you have time to comply with all of the requirements from the planner and from the engineer. And also any discussion where we've added or would like anything else added on it. So, we look forward to you coming back. And so, if we could have a motion this time to, to table this until the next meeting or until the site plan is completed. And please state the name and the property identification for the records.
Will I make a motion to table the Lamont Farm Market site plan? Do we have another date for, they're going to come back on or?
Well, I think if they comply with everything, hoping that you'll be able to come back at the, at the next meeting, which would be June.
Seven.
Yeah, the June meeting.
Does it special use, take a long time to get or that's just thirty days advance and get the schedule?
Fifteen days notice, yeah.
So, shouldn't be a problem making June seventh if we ink that in, okay?
We would have had that special end use for this meeting. We just didn't know, we didn't know it was required or would have been. Is there a personal ID number for property identification?
I was quickly looking for one.
Section twenty-eight, T five and R seventy. That's what it says on here. Sounds good. They put it on there, it must be good.
You don't need a personal number, just good for approval. But if you're not personal, you have to. Postponing.
Postponing, okay, that's fine.
I'll support Derek Burton.
All right, so I have a motion on the board to table the Lamont site plan to June seventh and support. And so, can I have a roll call vote on that?
Burton?
Yes.
Garton?
Yes.
McKeeany?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried, so you're all set and we look forward to you coming back. It looks like it's going to be very nice, very nice contribution to Holly Township and surrounding area. So, we have, oh, reports. Is there anything, anybody has report, anything? Karen, is there anything that you need to report to us that the planning commission needs to know?
Just a big development coming for you to look at next month.
Yes, yes, we do. We're going to have Riverside. And that was one reference that was made when we take a look at, you know, the businesses along there and crosswalk or pedestrian walkers. Because that's going to be quite a large, large site plan. Pardon me, sir?
What is that going to be?
Riverside, it's, um, it's just, it's, it's east of where their building is, east and north.
It takes the Riverside right now that's behind the cemetery and takes it all the way to Fish Lake Road.
Next Patterson School, right across.
Correct, that Patterson School behind the cemetery goes all the way over to Fish Lake.
Oh, gosh, so they're going to extend that subdivision?
That subdivision could go all the way to Fish Lake Road.
There's no reports?
I do have a question, it falls into this category or not? This for John.
Okay.
So, heavy controversy in our village, I'm assuming our township would be the same thing. What about all the dispensaries and stuff? How do we approach that? Isn't that fall under our category?
It, it sure does.
And I don't want to open a can of worms, but don't we have to approach that pretty soon?
Well, right now, the, the township has opted out, so you don't have, you know, anything to worry about right now.
With the opt out, period stops?
No.
I thought it only lasted for two years.
No, it only, only if you want to allow the facilities, then you develop ordinance that would regulate where they can go, what types of facilities you want to allow, that sort of thing.
And you can opt out indefinitely?
Mm-hmm.
But I thought the state made it a law and so that we were all going to have to conform. I'm, I'm, I truly am out, out in the dark, I just.
Yeah, no.
It's obviously been heavy controversy in our village lately, so I'm just.
Yep, a lot of, a lot of different information flying around, but I think the township is weighing its options, looking at what other communities are doing, learning some lessons that other communities have learned sort of the hard way. Uh, to put together something that fits the township.
I guess one of the, with that said, you, you do need to know that we're, we're weighing our options because what has happened to some communities is that there's consultants, for lack of a better word, going around and casting petitions to get this, you know, to a referendum, so a vote. And if you don't have any ordinances on the books and it goes to a vote, you're getting whatever.
That, that was the impression I got, but I thought that was from the state.
I think it was approved in Holly by about sixty-three percent. So, if we don't have something and that is to happen, they can do whatever.
If there's a referendum.
If there's a referendum, but it's not an automatic two-year deal.
Well, I'm, I'm fine, just try to get now.
Right, I understand.
That's it, my report.
Yeah, I did have a question and I forgot to bring it. I had invitation to, it's an historic meeting kind of in Holly, I can't remember the name of it.
Michigan Historic Preservation.
Yeah, do you want to talk about that? Because it sounded like it was probably the planning commission all received it? I don't know. I don't remember.
Yes, that is, that's, is the eleven, is that?
You have to RSVP by tomorrow.
I, did you, I did get a separate invitation, I'm sure, assuming everybody did and that if you were going to go, you would answer for yourself, but.
I just wondered if we want to talk about what it was intended to do or, you know, it sounded like the township was kind of one of the sponsors to it almost.
Yeah, it's being held in Holly, right? I, where is it being?
It's at.
I think it's at the vault.
No, it's at the high school. The new one allowed on college.
Yeah.
Through their college street.
Yeah, and I understand that, uh, members of the township will be presenting on the Holly Farmstead project. I think that's what's on, one of the items on the agenda, so.
I'll be given a walking tour.
Isn't, is that at the township hall? Mr. Senator, where is it at?
I'm not really sure.
If that's the meeting place, it's the old people, the Vincent School or what I knew it as.
Sure.
Yeah, that's where the headboard is. Did they get an invite to the reception?
You never got it? I will, um, okay. Did you get the card on it? You know what, I'll do, I'll take, I'll snap a picture of it and send it to you.
My mother was.
Isn't it?
It's with your name placard probably.
Isn't that the eleventh?
In the black hole.
In the evening, I thought it was in the, on the eleventh?
I think eleventh is when it starts.
I think it's on the eleventh.
Yeah, it's the three day, yeah. It's kind of a big deal.
Snap it and send it to all of you.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I get it.
We're the smallest district to host it and it should bring two hundred to two hundred and fifty people here. Quarter million dollars worth of economic flow.
Supposedly.
Supposedly, that's the estimate. Because of the apartment or the rentals around and all that kind of good stuff. So, it's, it's, it's kind of a big deal.
Tomorrow is the date, I thought it said for the, to make reservations for it. Maybe take it after that.
Yeah. I think we have a little bit of leeway. We know the guys that are organizing it.
All right, well, I just wanted, thought I'd comment.
It should be a good time.
Let me look at something and see if I have it on my phone.
Yeah, I did not get it, I don't.
It's usually held in like Traverse City or Grand Rapids or some other larger places, but we've, we've made the mark, we got on it. Pardon me?
The last previous year was at, we've got the zoo.
Yeah.
It is, uh.
Board of Commerce.
Again.
Meal that they have.
It's the, okay, it is, it is, I have it here. The forty-second conference for Holly Township for the Michigan Historic Preservation Network. And it is on, um, May eleventh. And there was, there is a contact to RSVP and I can forward that on. I've got the numbers here, I can give it to you.
Isn't there also a bus trip involved with that too, potentially? Was walking part in the dust? Forgot to bring it. I had it.
Did you RSVP?
No.
Yeah, I can go ahead and send that.
Just trying to think.
I'm still trying to figure out.
I'll send that to you.
Yeah.
Put your form up.
Write your form up.
It's not over.
Does anybody else need, I can send it.
Uh, I have it, yes. And then while we're discussing things that are coming, I had to look up the date just to make sure. I want to let everybody know just in case, uh, some may not be aware that the Vietnam Traveling Wall will be here in August, the third through the eighth. And it will be the, I think it's the only time it's in Michigan this year, I believe. So, that's quite a unique experience and something I would encourage everyone to go to.
August, what day was it?
Uh, third through the eighth is the dates I pulled up online. I'll, I will bring, I'll just confirm that and I will bring those dates next month. But from what I'm seeing, it's August third through the eighth.
What is that?
It's the Vietnam Traveling Wall.
Oh, yeah.
Those are the correct dates.
Wow.
Yeah. And I, you know, and it really puts it in, I mean, you hear all of the, you know, the numbers from the war, but to really visually see it, I mean, really adds another kind of piece to it. And I mean, it's.
That would be something to see.
Mm-hmm.
Really would. Okay. So, do we have any other public comment from anybody in the audience? Do you want to step up and tell us who you are or?
I'll speak out enough here.
Okay.
My name's Nathan Irby. I live three, eight, seven, Sloan Drive.
Three eight?
Three eight, three seven. I was here on behalf, or I'm currently the president of Riverside North Association of newly elected board. And I was curious to hear about the site plan for the development, but it sounds like it will be at the next meeting, so I won't raise too many questions. I'll save it until next meeting.
Okay. Well, Karen, I think it looks like it will be on, on our June, on our June board.
But what were your questions? Just so we got something to think about.
Well, such as, so I've seen the pre-meeting approval that's been shared with me. Such as in the plan for phase five B of the development, would that and other, the next phases all be considered as one community with one association or different governing bodies, how that would work? When does the fan, phase five B, as well as all the others, each phase planned to take place? What's the plan for construction vehicles for five B and moving forward, especially going through our community, which currently looks like the only access point? Is the Silverman Company, are they associated with the current development of Riverside North, AKA five, five A, which is our community? Will it be a formal notice to the residents of future plans in Riverside North community?
Well, good. Things we can think about for next time.
Will there be notices sent to all the people like neighboring this property, like all the ones that are currently?
Three hundred foot notices only for Riverside Village that's coming next month? They did not apply for Riverside five B. And if it's not a PRU or a PRD, it won't be noticed?
So, I don't probably.
Just depends on how they apply. I can help you if you want to see me in my office, I can answer a lot of those for you.
Just expect probably quite community members in the next meeting, because that was a big up for this morning. And I think so.
Okay, thank you. Well, have to do our homework and be prepared. I've got nothing else on the agenda, so I think we can, we can adjourn, so, we're going to motion to adjourn. I can make a motion that will adjourn.
So moved.
Seven twenty. We're all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we.